Testimonial of presenters, 1.4. Please be advised if you are here today on an agenda item for presentation, that you are under oath before the Commissioners' Court. 1.5, Public Comments. You have no public comments. 1.6, Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting, September the 3rd, 2024.
Subject to corrections, so.
Subject to no corrections. I have a motion by Commissioner Rurukawa. I have a second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1, Approval of Bonds. Do I have a motion?
Uh huh.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jose Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. The court's going to go into executive session at this time. If I could please, the time is 10:09.
The debt, if you notice, on column B of the property values, last or this current fiscal year, $9.1 billion. Next fiscal year, about $7.9 billion. But on column D is the county's existing debt. On column D, a total of about $22.5 million. And then we have the tax notes. We did the financing and structured it with the guidance of Mr. Beretta for two years, so borrowing $5,615,000 and paying it off in fiscal, a small portion in fiscal year '25 and the balance in fiscal year '26. This current fiscal year, 2024, the county has paid off about $15 million financing of 2021 COs and 2022 COs. So if this loan is approved, the county will have a balance of roughly the 22 tax notes and $13.5 million COs along with the tax note series 2024. If you turn to page four on the timetable, if this is approved on September the 9th, this afternoon, the county will receive the funds on October the 10th, which is a Thursday. Now, on page five, we have the working group, the issuer, Dimon County, financial advisor, bond counsel, Iskami Alponic, placement agent, FHN Financial, purchaser and pain agent is Webster Bank. And the interest rate for the loan, $5,615,000 over a two-year period is 3.61%. For a two-year loan, the rate was 3.61%.
3.61%?
Yes, ma'am. And we're estimating when we came in front of the Commissioners' Court last month, about 4%. So it's better than what we expected. Any questions, Judge, or from the Commissioners or staff?
Are there any questions?
If there isn't any questions, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, discussion. You need to, uh, question, I mean, excuse me, Mr.?
Aguirre.
No, I understand, Mr. Go ahead.
Uh, no, Judge, so the, uh, what we have done is we prepared the order and we have incorporated everything that Mr. Aguirre has already presented to you. The, this order itself is what is the contract into being used to finance. So if it's the wishes of the court to proceed forward, then a motion, Judge, in a second, just like you stated, is what is needed. But again, everything has been incorporated into the, uh, into the order as to the numbers that we received from the, uh, from the, uh, the West, the bank, Webster Bank, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Any legal questions?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Urenda.
And Judge, if I may approach the bench, just, I got two signatures.
Mrs. Dorick, if you want to board them to Mr. Garcia, the county clerk, and he'll get those to me.
Okay, thank you very much.
2.3, Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Hearing on Proposed Budget 2024. Are there any comments? No action. 2.4, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval of Budget for 2024, 2025. I will put in the form of a motion, subject to corrections, for the budget for 2024, 2025 to be approved as presented with corrections. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I have one opposition by Commissioner Rurukawa. Motion carries. 2.5, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval to Adopt Tax Rate Maintenance and Operation. Maintenance and Operation.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Just for the record, um, when I requested the agenda item, it was a two-part, not a two item.
So it should be the approval of the interests?
Of MNO and INS in two parts, but as a total tax rate.
Yes, ma'am. So, Mr. Garcia, we're going to open up for the discussion on appropriate action, 2.5 and 2.6.
The proposed tax rate for the 2024, 2025 tax year is .2800, which is below the non-revenue tax rate of .3312.
Give me that number again, Ms. Sandoval.
The proposed tax rate is .2800. The non-revenue tax rate is .3312. And the voter approval tax rate is .3361. So due to the proposed tax rate being below the new, non-revenue tax rate, there is no need for a public hearing. So it's up to the court to vote on the MNO and the INS separately for the total tax rate of .2800.
You have questions, Judge Betis, Judge?
Well, we were just wondering, like, how are we going to know what changes? But I know that, like, if any of us were affected by the changes, I guess that's why we're asking.
Oh, talk to you right now. Give me one second. Questions to Ms. Sandoval?
Yes. The MNO is .1600 and the INS is .1200 for a total tax rate of .2800. The drop is from 2.8, yeah, 2.850 to 2.800. From last year.
Any questions? Any corrections? Shall I entertain a motion? Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jose Urenda. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I have one opposition, Commissioner Rurukawa. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the public, as soon as Mr. Edina gives us the, all the changes we have made, we didn't increase any value, but we increased on a lot of stuff that we thought was appropriate. So then we had the argument here, you all getting to see the vibe. It went well for everybody. Thank you.
For the record, I am not, I voted against the budget being set. The reason why I don't have the backup in the binder, I don't have the backup with the changes until Mr. Beretta does the changes. That one, that's the reason why I voted against the budget.
Were any departments moved?
I'm sorry?
Were any departments moved?
No, there's no departments moved. And we're now, we, honestly, we can't entertain public comment, Ms. Sandoval, but it's just comments that the court is making. On the budget, I have no problem. I'm going to reopen, Mr. Garcia, just for transparency for the public. Not changing the, the voting, the voting is staying as it is. It's just for transparency. Yes, you can, Mr. Carmona. Changes to the budget, Judge Betis. We, um, increase on a Veterans Affairs position to allow the community of Dimon County to have a more permanent Veterans Affairs officer. The Tax Assessor Office got an increase on their part-time from $12,000 as proposed in the budget to $15,000. And just to put on the record for any other elected officials that may inquire, Judge, me and Commissioner Rurukawa did abstain in that discussion because her, one of the employees there is, um, for purposes of nepotism, I'm not going to specify. But there was an increase on the Tax Assessor for, for the part-time, uh, position, part-time allocation. In the District Clerk's Office, there was an increase in operating supplies and an increase in travel or training to allow, um, the District Clerk's staff to possibly request mileage for when court is being held in the 365th at the rodeo arena, Ms. Gonzalez, so that your staff can possibly play mileage. The food pantry was increased as well, um, at $35,000. There was an increase on a request for Judge, for me, excuse me, for Commissioner Rurukawa for containers on equipment. There was also a change in, increase for operating supplies for Roden Bridge Precinct 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, an additional increase of $20,000. For Constable, Precinct 4, there was an addition made or carryover from last year's budget in the amount of $36,000 for purchase of a new vehicle for Precinct 4, Constable. We also had to have an increase on our insurance due to several lawsuits that have been filed. For the fire department, for the fire department, there was an increase on maintenance and repair equipment and building from $5,000 to $10,000. That's for the fire department. There was a position requested for utility to, for the addition of a AC position, which was denied and removed from the budget. There was a, for a possible water well in case there is not an agreement with the city of Curriezo Springs for water usage for the utility department and regulatory department. I already said the sanitation, right, for the, for the containers. Does that appear on the note? And those were all the changes made.
May I approach? Yeah, I sent the, Judge, to yourself and the Commissioners, a letter with my proposed changes, specifically 722, I only get $100,000. I need to provide a copy of that budget in order to close out my, uh, my last year's grant. And it was incorrect at $159. Does that change to $100,000?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
And then the only other thing I needed checked on is that add two employees and would they both getting the raise? Because the first page of my proposed budget, it wasn't on there, but then the second page, supposedly it was. Those are the only two items I had.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Commissioners, can I have a floor, please?
No, sir, you don't, it was public comment already, Judge.
Can I have a floor, please, for a motion second?
There's a motion, have already been in place and a second, and we've already voted.
For purposes of disclosure, I want you to know you might have taken an illegal action in this meeting. I just wanted to let you know that there's only two items disclosed on the executive session. And you cannot disclose the budgets in closed session. That would be a violation of the open meetings.
Mr. Beretta? Questions? Anything else from the Commissioners? You can, you can ask him to repeat it. Are there any other questions or discussion of the budget? I had a motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona to approve the budget. And I have a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any other discussion regarding the budget?
Yeah, it's a little confusing. Did you reopen the discussion on the budget?
Opened it, I opened it for rediscussion and appropriate action, Mr. Gonzalez.
Was that voted on by the entire Commissioners' Court to reopen it? And then to reclose it, I believe you missed a step.
I entertained a motion to open it, Commissioner Juan Carmona. And second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
So now what?
I'm going to redo the, to approve it.
Okay. Before you asked the votes and you asked the discussion, were you asking the public if there was any further discussion or any?
Correct, on, on 2.3, where it says public budget hearing on proposed 2024.
So are you now giving any other elected official that has any concerns about their budget an opportunity to?
That is on 2.3, Mr. Gonzalez, I opened that up in 2.3.
So if anyone has a question, this is the time to, is that correct?
That is the time, 2.3 was the time for any, anybody that had a question regarding the budget hearing for the Commissioners' Court to hear. Give me one second. Mr., um, Mr. Garcia, I'm going to motion to open up 2.3 as I had done a little while ago for the public, for the budget hearing. When I asked if there was any comments and no one got up to say that there was any comments, I'm going to open up 2.3, I'm motioning it. I have a second to open up for budget. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
I have a second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Hearing on Proposed Budget for 2024. Anybody want to make a public comment?
Good afternoon, thank you for this opportunity. With respect to, I didn't hear when there was references made as to what amendments had been presented, if there was any discussion with respect to the 365th Judicial District Court. There are a couple of, some items on my.
And you are for three minutes?
I'm Alva Escada, Judge of Moscow.
Judge of Moscow.
With respect to professional services, um, last year we were budget $50,000. We've already exceeded that this year. When I have the budget worked out with your folks, I explained to them we had already exceeded it. We're in fact requesting a budget amendment for the current budget year. Um, and it was, and I was requesting $75,000, but it was proposed at $50,000. Again, that's not going to meet our budgetary needs. The professional services not only includes appointment of attorneys for indigent defendants, but also appointment for, for parents in CPS cases. There are some cases where we have multiple fathers in addition to the mother. There's also an item. Uh, we pay them for eight court time, a nominal fee of $100 per month, I'm sorry, per hour each. Uh, so if you have five attorneys involved, that's $500 an hour just on one single CPS case. Uh, also in professional services, that includes fees that we have to pay for interpreters, for psychiatrists. Anytime there's a motion for a competency evaluation. Court orders, transcripts, in case there's an appeal and there's a transcript requested by statute, we're required to provide a free transcript of court proceedings to indigent parties. So $50,000 is not going to be nearly enough. As I said, as of this morning, we're already in excess of just the items that I've approved. We're in the whole $11,768. And we still have some orders pending in my office as well as some time remaining in the fiscal year. So I would respect the request that you seriously consider, my request of $75,000. And the elected official, um, was proposed, it was $4,258. That's my juvenile board salary fee. To put that in perspective, what the county judge is currently receiving for juvenile board, for elect, is $16,000. The District Courts or the juvenile judges, we're the ones that hear the adjudication hearing, the disposition hearings, and we are first in line to hear the.
15 seconds, Judge.
I apologize. And then on car allowance, last year I was cut $7,436 for my car allowance. The reason the car allowance was so high is since we had transferred over the years some of the juvenile board fee, crew court car allowance, and so we've lost that now.
Your time's up.
Myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Give me one second, Ms. Adams.
Thank you. Lupita Adams, on behalf of Judge Flottis, just also too, wanted to, re, resubmit our request for car allowance for Judge Flottis. We are here every month for our non-jury docket date. We're also here in person for trials as well as any in-person hearings that are requested by the attorneys. We do use Zoom, we utilize Zoom, but we don't do 100% Zoom when it comes to Dimon. And we just wanted to ask the judge and Commissioners to reconsider the judge's, my, car allowance.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Constable?
Commissioners, Judge? Uh, the reason I'm here is, excuse me, I was recently just informed this morning that my fuel and oil, we had to do a budget adjustment of just over $3,000 just to cover for the remainder of the budget year. So I'm asking to increase from the $8,000 to $12,000 to, we won't have this issue again for next year. It should just be a $4,000 increase for fuel and oil. That's why I'm here.
Thank you, Constable. Mr. Ortiz?
Yes, um, I had a question for how payroll's going to work next fiscal year. I was under the impression that the employees were getting up to a $1.50 for their salaries, but then I also noticed for some departments, there was more than the $1.50 for the employees. And then there was some that was less. So I need to know how my department is going to handle those situations.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. We can't entertain a discussion.
Judge, the only question I had and concern was my data processing. That's what I was questioning. On the budget itself, it was back, um, previous year was $10,500. And on this proposed budget, it was $9,500. And I just wanted to see, and I did speak to Mr. Beretta about correcting it because all the JPs, we pay the same amount and we all have less than the $10,500 for our data processing. I just wanted the court.
Thank you, Judge.
Judge, to be aware.
Any other public comments?
Yes.
David O'Hara with the Community Services Agency. Judge, I just would like to request that you review the information that we have provided for you. Now that we opened up the new building, we have had an increase in participants that were not there before. And my understanding is that the Commissioners' Court approved the same budget that we've gotten for the last two or three years. And I would just ask that you, if you could just relook at those, that information we have provided for you. We have had a substantial increase in people that are coming that were not funded, actually, they're not funded for, for those of you. So I just ask if you could, you know, look at those figures that we have provided to you previously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any other comments? Any other comments?
Judge, are you in the public hearing or public comments?
Public hearing, um.
If you, later, do you open public comment? I have a comment, not on, not on the budget, but on the public comments.
I, I closed that in the beginning, Mr. Jaime, but you can
Well, it.
address it in pub, this public hearing.
It, uh, it's, do you want to, you heard, uh, late, uh, Mr. Rodrigo Ojeda fester away? and he was a county clerk, elected official for Dimmitt County.
Oh, Judge.
I would like for the county to do something, a proclamation on behalf of Dimmitt County, because he was a county judge.
I, I agree. We, actually, as a matter of fact, it's already in discussion for us to do a memorial for him next week.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comments for the public hearing?
Can I want to approach in just like five seconds?
Yes, ma'am.
I meant to, sorry, I was nervous.
It's okay.
I meant to add also our numbers. When Judge Flores took, first took the bench in 2018, she inherited 335 Dimmitt cases, and she has totally disposed 900, I'm sorry. And then since then, the total cases filed have been 967, and total caseload was 1302. But she's since disposed of 979 cases with a pending caseload of 524, and she's had 103 non-jury docket days.
Thank you, Ms. Ojeda.
Thank you.
Any other public comments on the public hearing? I'm going to close that, Mr. Garcia, for the public hearings.
For... If, if now that we, we're going to close the public hearing, and now that we hear all these concerns that are there, are we going to address them, or what are we going to do?
I am going to open up 2.4 again, and I'm going to give the same motion. And if you want to discuss or change something, you can. But I'm going to, 2.4, Discussion and Appropriate Action: Approval of Budget for 2024, 2025, with the motion on the floor again, Mr. Garcia, that this court approved the budget subject to the changes as put onto the record earlier regarding those changes. I have a motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona and a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Are there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? No opposition, motion carries. 2.5, Discussion and Appropriate Action. We already, we already have that. You got Commissioner Alonso Carmona and Commissioner Urenda. And we have one opposition that still stays the same, Commissioner Duukawa, the interest in sinking and maintenance in operation. 3.5, Discussion and Appropriate Action Regarding Budget Adjustment Number 96, Road and Bridge Precinct 4. Yes.
I found there was a, like, budget change.
I just did. I asked if there was any discussion.
Why were you motioning to the discussions?
I know, I just asked you guys if y'all had any discussions, and nobody said anything.
I'm going to make a comment. When you all, this year it was done differently. We didn't, we didn't get to see what you guys requested, elected officials. As of right now, we don't know what you guys requested. So you all coming up to us and telling us or explaining to us? I mean, that's what we're finding out. We didn't get it. We didn't get the backup to it. This is the first time that we're here sitting down, we don't have backup. What I'm saying is, for instance, Mary, what you requested, that you needed or you wanted, we didn't have it. The meeting was between you, the judge, and Mr. Pereira, and that's it. We, or I'm going to speak for myself, I didn't get to see that. I'm just speaking for myself.
Well, I'm going to make a comment. And however it was set, just be ready for budget adjustments next year. Whether we have the money to move around or not, they're going to happen.
Thank you. You have a budget adjustment, Commissioner Duukawa, 3.1?
Yes. With the, with the transfer that we did from Department Precinct 3 to Precinct 2, Precinct 4, though, that's the difference that we needed.
The position that you got? Questions of Commissioner Duukawa? I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
My question was, was this position resetting October first?
You weren't here at the last meeting, but, so Commissioner Juan Carmona asked at the last meeting was, he wanted to transfer one of his positions to Commissioner Duukawa.
So that's, that's the position I got cut from this year?
No, that's for parks. He's giving, I think it's one of his road and bridge to you?
I'm giving one over to my department.
So the reason why Commissioner Duukawa needs a budget adjustment is because that particular position was not, um...
They're budgeted at that amount of price.
Exactly. It was the money that was allocated for Commissioner Juan's person without the amount being exposed, or the name of the person was making more money than what Commissioner Duukawa has on her payroll.
Right.
So when they transferred it, Commissioner Duukawa doesn't have those funds in her budget because that person gets paid more than what the position she has. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Yes.
Are you something to happen to, because right now...
He's still keeping that position, correct?
Yes, he does have that position.
He's keeping that position until he, until he retire, his last day. He's not going to transfer that position to you.
I thought it was, it was September 10th?
No, it already took place.
September 10th, he started...
That's not what he...
They swapped. That's what happened.
So you need to give that position to Commissioner already?
Well, that's why this is not an adjustment because Precinct 4, it doesn't have it. So if that increased it, you're getting the lower pay because it's starting out.
It's just being, well, we discussed it.
I know, and that's what I said to you.
I said that it was going to be until after the 15th because I was going to carry him for two weeks. And now you're saying different?
Because that's what John said at last meeting.
We approved that position being more than every day. We didn't see that in the...
No, we didn't. It was, it was affected that day.
Yeah, that's what you put the agenda, I know.
No, that was...
The transfer was supposed to be, when Commissioner Duukawa, was that 10, you put, right?
Right, you were going to give me money. She's going to give me one, and I'm going to give her the other one.
Mine has affected that day.
But some of you said at 15, that I was going to carry two.
That was last month, since December 10th, and last month's, that's the secret.
It's in the mail, it was approved today, Judge, on page 3 or 4, I have 3.22 and...
For September 10th.
Yep.
Yes.
And you were here, you said, this last month when you asked me to...
I understand I was here, but my working intention was to...
It's interesting, you didn't mention it.
So as I can make a position, I'm going to give the other position.
So you're, you're not losing a position, Commissioner. You're not losing a position. You and her are swapping positions.
Persons.
Persons.
Right.
You're, the gentleman, the person that you wanted to give her is going to her September 10th, not September 15th.
So I don't have to pay for this pay period?
September 14th?
September 10th, or she's going to pay for it?
Yes. Maybe that's why they need the budget amendment.
That's why she needs a budget, that's why she, and she needs a budget adjustment because she doesn't have that funds in her budget because she had not budgeted for this individual to get paid what he's getting paid. Mr. Garcia, I had a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona and a second by Commissioner Juan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.2 is a claim docket. On the general fund, we have $7,761.69. Any discussion? For a grand total of $7,761.69. You have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to recess and adjourn this regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urenda.
Judge.
Yes, sir.
For discussion, I'm still concerned on this, uh, but, but, uh, what was discussed after we adopted the budget. So we ain't going to address them anymore, it stands where it stands, correct?
Correct.
In that case, can I refresh my, uh, replace, uh, what do you call it? Re-d，则 my, resent my I or do you want a no?
Yes, sir, again, we can, I can open it again. Are you rescinding your motion to recess and adjourn? to open a discussion for approval of budget 2024, we have Commissioner Juan that wants to rescind his yea to nay, Mr. Garcia.
Well, if it's already open, if it's, if it's already open, you can discuss. It takes three votes.
Anything else?
We can discuss.
Yeah, it's very open, and again, it's open for discussion.
So my only question is reversing Mr. Ojeda's remark about people getting more than $1.50. Can we do clarification on that?
Nobody's getting more than $1.50, right?
Right. So, for the record... That's what I'm asking for, clarification on that, for transparency reasons. Yes.
Yeah. I know.
So each, so each department is getting 3,120 times the number of employees they currently have or, or the position's budget for this year?
Correct.
Which one?
For the number of positions budgeted this year.
So then Commissioner Juan, you're not getting cut a position, right?
No, he's not.
Okay.
Good.
Can you add this, this will go for discussion? We can discuss it.
I understand, but what is that, what I wanted to ask, man?
Go ahead.
Why don't these people have to speak on board so they, they could let us know what we want?
They are speaking right now, and that's why, they're speaking right now. That's why Commissioner Duukawa is telling you, you have discussion.
Okay, so do we approve, can we approve whatever they are disapproved, you know, from board?
Yes, you can, and you have that right as a commissioner to do your recommendation. Out of the three, three out of five votes, and we had four, now we have three again. And you and Commissioner Duukawa, I believe, are opposed, right? Commissioner Duukawa?
I had opposed to the legend.
Correct.
Okay, because, uh, on the elderly's...
The CSA, you want to correct that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we can do that?
So we're going to correct everybody that came up?
Well, not necessarily. He's recommending.
Well, then I recommend we move it over the other two or three that came up to ask for the recommendations.
I approve your proposal, or...
She was asking for her, for an increase in her car allowance.
And Judge Oskar was asking?
Judge Oskar was also asking.
He's asking for an increase in car allowance and...
Well, that was...
We had already discussed that, correct?
It was.
It's, it was where it was at. So right now, on the floor, Commissioner Juan is asking for the CSA to have an increase. Or, what is your recommendation, Commissioner Juan?
What was the request?
What's the patient number?
I don't know what the patient number is. Mr. Pereira?
Forty-three.
What is it?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. The amount is the same what they requested.
That's the amount, it's the same.
The same, so I don't know.
They didn't ask for any more?
They didn't ask for any more, that's what they requested. That's why we're giving them that.
It's all they requested.
Yes, that's what they're giving.
But no, this is getting more.
No.
They requested, what they're requesting, that's what they're getting.
Exactly.
According to them.
No, they didn't request any more, that's what we did.
Okay.
That's the, that's the request they made, Commissioner Urenda, and that's what we're giving them, what they requested.
Our request is already taken, Commissioner, so we're, would you say that they didn't get what, more money than...
It's because what Mr., because what Mr., yes, what Mr. Ojeda is trying to say is that he wants, what he requested, which was more this year, to be approved. And we request, we approved it.
Okay.
That's what he requested.
And Judge Oskar, what, what were you requesting?
With respect to, to the car allowance, in 2223, I have a car allowance of $17,436. Last year, it was reduced to $10,000. So I was cut $7,436, as well as Judge Brode's. All we're asking is to come up to what we had in 2223. We lost already $7,436 last year, and the proposed budget gives us the same cut. This, your judges, state employees, we have not received a base pay raise since 2013.
I'm sorry, but, uh, the judge is telling me that we can't hear you all. No, um...
My only thing is, next year, we need to do this a lot better because to me, I don't think it's, it's being fair for our elected officials, for our taxpayers. Because we, or you, we did the budget differently this year, and it's causing a lot of confusion because we don't know what you guys requested.
We, we did, Commissioner, and the, the...
I know the budget, you're the budget officer, and you can do it the way you want, and this is new, new for us. But to me, I feel it's a lot better when we sit and hear every elected official out. Right now, we don't know, we're finding out what everybody else is saying that they want because we didn't get that part. We didn't get that backup. We're going by what's already on the budget, what the proposed budget is.
And all the changes we made, Commissioner...
And the changes that we made, that's how we did it, but we didn't see what you guys were asking for. We were just going by the proposed.
And the changes that we made, that I put onto the record, were changes that you recommended as well.
That we all recommended, that's what I'm saying. We recommended, but we didn't know what they were asking for because we didn't get that.
But, but, on that end, that's why I made an agenda request at one time, that we would have a whole budget review workshop after it was proposed. And they registered, Pereira, that I told you that? And I wanted to do a whole budget review, and I submitted the agenda request with the signature of four commissioners.
Anything else?
Judge.
Yes, Mr. Ojeda.
Uh, what is the approved budget, you know, just for, we need to know so we can plan for the coming...
For the, for their CSA nutrition program, it's $175,000.
Well, that, that's not what we have requested when you, when we met with you and Mr. Pereira.
I think you, I think you, where are you at? You requested $80,000. That's what you requested. That's what I have here.
We, we provided you with information when we met with you and Mr. Pereira.
Your total request is $104,264.
That's, that's not correct.
Mr. Pereira, do you have a different number? That's the number you gave me.
That's what they requested, that what he's talking about, the words of people, the other people?
You see, that's what we're talking, sir, because we were referring to that. We, there's no backup there. Any other questions?
Here you go.
So it's what, what are your payments?
That's what, uh, basically, we're just saying is that they're adding up people to the program.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I was considering, I was questioning, it, it also was... One was a little bit, but... Well, that's what...
This is afterwards.
It's what June said.
If they requested you to be here.
It was June said what? He doesn't care. It was June said what?
That's what they're requesting, what he's saying.
What they're, what they're saying is, you know, and...
Because he, it's because they want, they have 54 on the waiting list, that's what Judge Pereira's saying. My recommendation, Mr. Garcia, to, Mr. Pereira, to make the correction on the budget for the CSA elderly nutrition is to reflect the amount of $250,000. Any other discussion on that particular item? $250, you said, correct? Yeah? Okay. Again, I have a motion on the table to approve the budget with Commissioner Alonso Carmona and Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
We have Commissioner Duukawa. More?
We're going to wait for Commissioner Juan to see if he's going to stay in order, what he's going to do.
Yes. Yes.
We, Mr. Garcia, also on the district judges, we are going to increase, my recommendation is to increase the car allowance from $10,000 to $15,000, Mr. Pereira.
So it's one more on the, uh, constable, or...
And the constable position, or the constable request to the, to reflect the $12,000, Mr. Pereira. We had a motion, Commissioner Juan, by, based on those changes. So we, for the elderly, we increased it from $175,000 to $250,000. Uh, for the district judges on the car allowance from $10,000 to $15,000. And then for Constable Valderas is the $8,000 and $12,000. You got that?
Yes.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona on the floor and a second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
We have one off, one opposition by Commissioner Duukawa. Motion carries. I have a motion to recess and adjourn by Commissioner Alonso Carmona and a second by Commissioner Urenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, the meeting has ended.